Good evening, this is the annual joint meeting of the New Market School Board with the New Market Town Council. And we'll begin with Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And just by way of introduction, I'd like to say that we're still fairly new in the shared services. I don't think it's an experiment, I think it's beyond that, but you know, this is something we started, it was one of the first communities in the county to fill with a shared service, which you know requires a close working relationship between the school board and the town council. And so we're what, a year and a half into that, or something along that line. And this is sort of something we've, that both the school board and the town council have agreed is an important part of that process, which is to have an annual joint meeting. It provides an opportunity to be updated on what we're doing, and also something that gives both boards an opportunity to discuss what the other board is working on. And just to make sure that, you know, we're all on the same page, we're all in agreement and ironing out any differences that do exist. So it's an important step, but hopefully a very smooth meeting, perhaps even a fairly short meeting, but it took a chance for people to raise any points of concern, or points of like, "This is really going well, let's talk about it, that's great." And just a couple of other things, I'd mention that we have a student representative for the school board here tonight, Caitlin Temple is there, and that Amy Burns from the town council is, has an excuse to absolve herself of town. And I think with that, I'll ask the two administrators to begin with a shared services update.
Great. Here you go.
Actually, yeah.
So, as Dale just mentioned, we started about a year and a half ago, sharing finance between the town and school. So we're overseeing combined operating budgets there of about $30 million and approximately $50 million right now in combined bonds across the school and town. Our business administrator slash finance director is also overseeing payroll and benefits for over 200 employees. DRA, Department of Revenue Administration, and audit reporting to provide support to both town department heads, as well as our school administrative team. Gatsby compliance, which is keeping track of all of our equipment. Budget and CIP preparation, which are coming right up and overlap a little bit as we move into the fall. Works with the board of trustees of the trust funds to oversee the town's investments and ongoing funds. And right now, the trustees have a new software portal with the state, so they're getting up to speed on the use of that. And she oversees on the school side as well, nutrition services. Current focus in that department is training up two new employees, one new employee on the school side and one new employee on the town side, so they're getting comfortable with the software, the ins and outs, the routines, the procedures, as well as the giant task of implementing the new software for the town. And I would say right now, that is more or less a full-time job for Lisa.
I think it's an interesting thing to state that, right now, the finance director's spending most of the time on our project with the software. I don't know if the school board's aware, but we're completely overhauling the entire financial software for the town side, because the, our current system is not going to be supported any longer. This is everything from, you know, her and her department is learning it, plus rolling it out to other departments and, you know, teaching the teachers type situation for individuals in each department. It's quite a large project. The biggest portion will be done sometime this winter, and then the final parts will be the spring. First parts, of course, is going to be budgeting, and the second part will be HR. It's a much more robust system that can do reporting and a lot more things off-site. So for us, it's going to be a win-win to try to save time and efforts to be doing more things digitally. But yeah, she's spending a lot more time, I think, with our side right now than the school, just because of that project. On the flip side...
On the flip side?
You have some other project going on, the facilities directors.
You take that one!
Question about that?
Yeah.
Is it more than she anticipated as far as the workload?
I don't think so, no. I think we, it's, we, at day one, we've been having scheduling meetings and reviewing calendars, and we've only had like, you know, with any project, you have a few hiccups, but nothing major, so. Now, I don't think it's anything more than she expected, it's just the size of the project.
Do you want to take this one?
Sure. So, on facilities, ongoing things that were, purchasing efficiencies, including combined energy purchasing, which we, we're looking at things today, getting some emails on that. Sharing school and town employees to work on various projects. Combined camera and card access system and energy management systems for town and schools' facilities. One vendor for roof maintenance program, support for the CIP process for the town and school. Some other items I've been working on, the town has finished a complete facility study, so he did a, went through every building to find issues that we may have, and things that we're going to need to address in the near future. His current focus is, of course, clerk of the works for the school building projects, and stormwater compliance for us for our MS4 floor permits. And some upcoming things, the implementation of shared request for service reporting system. That's a big thing right now, because as of now, it's, you need something done, we send emails and try to get things through the system that way, but we have no follow-up, so we have some software that we're going to be implementing, so we can know it's open and what needs to be addressed.
And again, I think, you know, to, in partially answer to your question, Kyle, it's about Steve and I coordinating a little bit as well. You know, both of these folks are very busy with their jobs and supporting their departments, and so we're providing some additional support to them, or to employees. You know, I'm supporting Lisa's staff on the school side, because she's busier with the town side, and other folks are, and Steve are supporting town folks around some of those facilities needs. So, that's the balance, right?
You're right.
Things are going to flip at some point, right? It'll level out, but we know that right now, these are the big projects facing the town, and we're committed to working together to get through them.
And I know on our side that we saw some changes in growth in positions since we started sharing the finance director. Somebody who was a staff accountant now is filling in the role as a deputy finance director to help us assist with those items, and then we have the other person being the AP payroll clerk.
So things aren't falling?
No, absolutely not.
Steve, do you guys, financing any facilities now, or at least staff, do you have a big need?
Finance, I would probably look at that a little more, maybe it could probably use some administrative assistance, not full-time.
Do you have a, um, change?
Yeah, yeah, and I think that's what I want to see, is once we get the software implemented, how much of a time-saving method it's going to be? I mean, one of the big things is, we're still a lot of paper. You know, timesheets are paper, POs are paper. This goes in, it's not going to be. I mean, literally, I mean, I, there's times when people have to drive across town to bring in a PO, and we want to get rid of that. So we're, that's one of the reasons also, we want to the system that we can do everything digitally.
Yeah, we want, like in schools, they have, schools that bring in the software, that's been your last bullet point about, you know, these could be as a, as big as a, you know, oil or maintenance program, and then to, a teacher says, "I've got a light out in my room," is that the type of?
The same, actually, it's the same company, I think it's called School Dude on the schools, it's called Facility Dude on ours.
Yeah.
So, it's just, they don't change the dude, they just change the first part of it.
So that would be for anything, for the town and schools?
Yeah, that's what we're looking at.
I'm sure you're going to talk about this a lot more, but for those of you who are here, we used to have finance director on both sides, on the town, on the school. And when you throw in benefits and so forth, it's a hundred and sixty, seventy thousand dollars worth of expense, and we've eliminated that. But the intention was not to be wanting to say that in that perspective, the intention was, they have one person focusing on the same objective for the town and the school. For example, you could, you used to not be able to call them, extensions didn't work between the town and the school. It's obvious that is, you'd have to call them from the outside. And there was all those kinds of things, facilities, maintenance, and so forth. Try to do things better, it's not necessarily trying to do things that were less expensive. So that's just a bit of background.
Your computer sleeps, so you can quick.
Apparently. I guess it never gets that much of a rep. So, you know, we continue to talk about future looking. We know that both of the staff, our existing staff who we share are very busy, and will be for at least the next year. Steve and I continue to talk to one another, obviously, about large purchases, and we've talked about, after we get through these two massive undertakings, where the additional needs are. And as Steve said, in the finance office, that may be a place where they have some needs, we've talked about that as well, in terms of an HR front, a dedicated person who really can become an expert in HR. Right now, we weigh in on that, on the town side, department heads weigh in on some of that, our AP clerk weighs in on some of that, so it's shared. And I think there's a lot of, a lot to be gained from a shared position with that expertise and specialization.
And I think, one thing also, you know, we mentioned the two big items that we're sharing, the facilities and the finance. But I think there's other things that we've been working together on a lot of projects. As emergency management director, as the council knows, we've been updating our emergency operations plan, and soon we'll be updating, creating a continuation of government plan. The superintendent has been in every meeting. So we have been working together to make sure that we have the resources in case of emergencies, anything from hurricanes to any other incidents that we may have. And the continuation of government plan would be for anything in the town in case of emergency. So, and also, I know the schools, you know, the school resource officer, we've been working together on that, for the new one for the elementary school, as well as other security items that the police department has been working with, the IT department and the school staff, to make sure everything's in place, and also for the new building.
Yeah, and I think it's those large and small things, and it's just becoming a pattern to kind of check in as we're thinking about things moving forward, to just touch base. Oh, our coffee release, you know, is going to be coming up in another year, you know, will it be time to coordinate that, for example? Those are the kinds of pieces that we continue to look at. And that, again, having these shared positions, they're looking at those things too, and seeing things that maybe we, no one noticed before, because now you've got one person seeing it from a couple of different vantage points.
Which many of you probably know, a few years ago, didn't happen. I mean, the perfect example is the phone system. We were both looking to do phone systems at the same time, wanted to, the school purchased it, we weren't ready yet, and just, it happened without us getting the same system. Which, ultimately, it would have been easier in case we had this without equipment, or anything like that, we could have been sharing, but it just didn't happen at that point in time. But I'm assuming, I think we're looking at stuff for the, when the renovations happen, that we would be able to be interoperable when it comes to that as well.
And I think the security work is a good example. There was just a meeting yesterday with Doug, you know, the town's IT person, and Jason, our IT person, with Greg, and some vendors, kind of mapping out how those pieces are going to fit together. And I think they too are seeing that need to really collaborate and understand the benefit.
And, you know, personally, a couple of weeks ago, I've been asking Jason from IT on the school, "We need some equipment that maybe we don't usually have for the emergency operations center, that the schools are used to," like smart boards. I wouldn't know how to buy a smart board, or what kind of technology that is, and what's best for it, but schools use them all the time, and that he's been advising me on what's better than, you know, certain items, so it, that kind of stuff. And again, when I first got here, there would probably have been no communication like that between the two sides.
One of the things, as we've gone through this whole process, has always come back to me, is that, and it's hit upon what you just said, Steve, the communication piece in terms of the benefits that the taxpayers will seek. They may not be fiscal benefits, but they're service benefits, and the customer service piece that we're able to provide, because we are making things, decisions that make sense, completely by knowledge that helps us solve them.
Thank you, Steve. Well, I mentioned that human resources needs, and we just spoke a little bit about technology. I think, certainly on the school side, as we move forward with one-to-one and across our middle, middle level and high school grade, we're going to see some increased use of software, also as we're moving towards a more personalized vision of education. Software is going to continue to grow in our world, but, but I know that on the town side, Steve and I have talked as well, that, you know, there's not a real backup plan on the town side if the IT director is out. So that's another area we want to continue to look at as we move into the upcoming two years.
Yeah, we've discussed doing a system-wide audit of ours, and see how we can blend it with the school.
Is there any type of long-term planning for technology?
That's the next, that's the next step.
And, I guess, is there any type of, have there been thoughts in regards to starting, I know we're commending up the Mizzou, but an IT steering committee?
As of right now, not in a committee. We wanted to first do the audit, see what our systems are, and, you know, what we have, and what we can operate it. At that point, I'd probably look at the schools and discuss that with them, to see what sharing we could have with personnel, and go from that step reverse. Because I mean, there are differences between what we require for systems and what the schools require. We can't have as much, you know, Chromebook-based systems for computers, because there's the software packages that we have versus what the, the school's almost all Google-based. But, I mean, as you know, we've switched out a lot of our software to Google-based, the cloud-based stuff, so we can share documents and those kind of items. Other technology, you know, where it's more, we're looking at Microsoft for people in the field to have out there, like the building inspector can do permits in the field, those kind of items. But we're still, we got to see what we have once this MUNIS system goes in, because MUNIS also covers building permits and permitting and those kind of items, so. It'll be, it will be a while before any technology committee is, if we go that route.
Okay. I mean, with everything going on with the schools, with the school, yeah, the schools, and the town, everything going in now, it's, technology changes every day.
Absolutely.
It changes every day.
Yep.
That's the world I live in.
Yep.
And I see it in other districts, I see it in other states, and at the government levels, so.
Yeah.
Having a committee would certainly help. I think there's a lot of very smart people in town in New Market.
And we're not questioning in the intelligence of anybody in the community.
I didn't mean it that way.
But, you know, we'll see where we can work together on getting technology purchases, but again, the certain different things that we have versus the...
Not purchases, I'm planning and...
Yeah.
Do you want to build any functions on which software?
And we're looking at, the finance software is actually called MUNIS. It's by Tyler Technologies.
The one that we're implementing right now?
Yes.
Okay.
So, and one of the things we also implemented recently, as the council knows, and we took off the training wheels last night, that we actually have meeting software now, that all their agendas are now completely digital. Soon it will be, they'll be able to request a speak and vote digitally, so we'll have records of that kept as well, separate from just, you know, also assisted the minute taker. So, now, what it used to be for the process of making council agendas was, people would send all these documents into my assistant or myself, we would get staff reports written, we'd have to go through everything, now everybody puts it in the cloud, we approve things, I approve things when they're ready to go, I can deny them, and it's been, you know, we're still learning, but it's been a much simpler process on our end and saved time, so we're trying to get the software up for that as well.
I was just looking at the bullet where it says FY '20 and beyond, do you have any more specific kind of dates you're pegging specific? You're saying IE resources and IT, is anything more specific than that for the next year or beyond?
So, so I know for Steve, that the need to do a technology audit is kind of going to drive that piece of the conversation. And we're going to get to a little bit of conversation about the upcoming budget year, but I don't think either of us were looking to try to move anything forward. In the next operating budget, I think it more likely will be the year after, again, just because of demands right now. HR, I can't see the business office taking on, trying to pull another position together over the course of the next year until the software is really up and running and the two employees really have their feet under them. Because there are also maybe some opportunity within existing positions to kind of reorganize, and we don't, we don't have our arms around that yet, and really won't, because of the workflow over the course of the upcoming year.
Okay.
I would just mention, go ahead.
Oh, well, I was going to mention, I think we had some very initial interest in moving towards a paperless environment for the town. Is the school also looking at something, and would there be overlap? Because I know that's kind of a process of scanning documents and stuff, so I don't know if we could share...
We use, we can use Google to share documents, and, I mean, we use a lot of school-based work that way, so we can have a team drive and share our documents that way. So I don't know if we're necessarily interested in the software piece at this point, but yes, the board has had conversations about paperless and essentially looking at devices. The board prioritized getting student one-to-one rolled out before it looked at devices for itself.
So for like, student documents, like, you know, records and stuff like that, that's all paperless now on your end, or are you retaining?
On our end at the school completely, you mean? That, most of that is in our senior information system in Infinite Campus, so those reports are generally contained in there, and then a lot of our, many of our classrooms, and especially as we've been fully towards one-to-one, our turning is electronic as the senior information.
So you've kind of naturally moved that way, kind of, as it's gone through the technology?
We have, less printing, we're reducing our printers every year, which is exciting. I don't think that are ever, they probably will never fully go away, you know, or at least, maybe not in the next five years, but perhaps beyond that.
You know, I think it's a good opportunity also to, you know, council Dumont's new, and just to review, you know, what the arrangement is between, with these positions, and with everybody here as well. That, you know, it's a, basically, we're contracting services with one another. The finance director is an employee of the school, and the facilities director is the employee of the town, but we have a shared services agreement that we're contracting with the school for their finances services, and vice versa. So really, this year, the person who's the employee for the school is doing a lot of stuff for the town, and this person for the town is doing a lot of stuff at the school because of the project. I can tell you that we're not having any issues with that, we understood that going in with that, that this was going to happen. You know, anytime there's a bump in the road, superintendent and I discuss it, have an issue, you know, we'll discuss items. Ultimately though, the, any disciplinary or any other communications with the employee rests with the administrator in that place. So, again, the facilities director is under my purview, and the superintendent is the finance person. If for some reason we don't agree, and it goes, so these two individuals come in, meet with us, and we have discussions at that point. We've never really gotten to that point, because we've been able to solve issues on our level that we may or may not have, so.
And the town council might not know that when the decision was made for Greg to assume more of the local works role, a part-time individual was brought into the facilities side for the school, to sort of help us support the non-school, non-building related things that we have on our side for that piece. So it's not take away from you guys, and that would be...
And I will just add as a side note, on the opposite side, there was money's built into the software implementation plan to allow for some overtime or additional support, so if we needed additional support to be able to fulfill all of the responsibilities, there are some funds available to do that, plus bringing some town help for the town.
Well, I think another example, now, we just, the town just, the two boards, the school board just put the SRO in the elementary school, place the boards to the town, that the SRO is primarily working for us. One of the concerns, people mentioned early on, is that's where conflict begins, our department, it's in our budget, and so far, it just, the working harmony is, is not a big issue about, you know, what percent of the SRO is working. We're just kind of working through it. And we started this process, we were told that the greatest liability for failure is the two boards getting in these disputes with one another, which is why it's a lot of it, just seems to be, we're so brave.
So the structure's not hobbling, sharing services, I guess, so we're still separate in this thing, but we're...
Yeah, it's, you know, it's kind of, it's really only one that actually does this.
Yeah, okay.
And thankfully, we've got two administrators that help, I don't know how they do it, but they do, they just kind of, and the boards try to stay out, at least the school board on the SRO, which is really something we need to make that decision, but ultimately, it's in our, in our budget somehow. And it'll be sorted out as time goes out, but that didn't stop the process. And I think we have, we ended up finding it, yeah.
We did.
Coming out of our...
We did.
This is my experience.
I could feel it. Are you paying for it?
But it though goes to Greg and Lisa themselves. You know, they really pitched in to make this work, they're working with employees in both departments, in both school districts and the town, to collaborate and work this through, and I think, yeah, we had some bumps. You know, it's not, it's not an easy thing to figure out who do you report to, or how do these two positions overlap? But I think they've, they've worked with us to work through those challenges, and worked with their colleagues to work through those challenges, and we're moving along in a positive direction.
Yeah, I think it's worth remembering, sort of the historical context that helped get us here, because, you know, before, before we started sharing services, there was, the challenge New Market faced is that we're basically a small municipality. We're more urban than we realize, and a lot of the challenges the town faces, we, you know, there's, the fact that we're not a larger city doesn't absolve us from the fact that it's more complex, running facilities, running AICs, and everything else. So New Market, a few years ago, would, you know, we have tremendous efficiencies in the town, but you had the same person that runs the fire department also running the public works, and, and by the way, he was sort of, sort of the biggest facilities expert we had, all at once trying to manage all of those things. And the school had similar things with facilities, so, and it was hard to scale up if the two operated entirely independently as they usually do, because the school have to have its own expert, if what they really need is, is two-thirds of a facilities person, and the town needs one-third of a facilities person, you know, each one trying to do that without coordinating seems, seems in some ways silly now, but that's the way it's always been done. So I think it's, it's worth at this point, as we've gone through the first two bullet points on the, on the review, to recognize what's been accomplished in the last year and a half, because that's the promise of it, that we can, that we can have more expertise within the town as employees, which still doesn't mean that at times we'll go outside and hire consultants, we'll hire in temporarily. But it's really, it's really nice to have a facilities person who's there as an employee the entire year. And on the, and on the town side, one of the complaints we had is when we had a, you know, our, our finance person, the accountant on the town side, that looked after that, we had a good system because he was working essentially three days a week, but that was tough, he wasn't there Monday and Friday, and you know, sometimes people would say, just, you know, if on Friday we realized we needed something for on, it's a long wait of Tuesdays sometimes. So I think, I think that's the, that was sort of the promise of going down this road that we realized, and I think as we review the rest of it, we got to make sure, if it were easy, a lot of places would be doing it, and it would always last. I think what, when you look at other towns, it's not always that easy. There are, there are going to be challenges when you add, sharing it between two boards adds a layer, and two administrators adds a layer of complexity. So you kind of have to have your eyes open to that, to make sure we're, we're sort of vigilant, if we think the value is there, we've got to be vigilant, make sure it's going to work.
And, you know, I've been discussing with some of my colleagues, some of the managers and administrators, and we've actually been bringing up the fact that everybody wants to share services, but we tend to look at wanting to share services with our similar entities, like other towns. And the difficulty there, it's much more difficult than we've been, even come close to, than been able to share with the school. You know, a number of times I've met with Stratum, or Exeter, or Durham, to say, "Okay, what can we share?" It was just, we were just at different places, different... It was just, we were just at different places, different needs. I mean, we do share solid waste contract with each other, but, you know, I met on that today, and we're still, we have different things that we need versus, you know, our, our needs, because we're, are more urban, I know it's funny saying that, but, versus Stratum, which is more rural, and we're just, have different requirements for solid waste. So I think this is actually, they are somewhat jealous, I know some communities, because we are sharing services. I think it's a benefit that we are a single school district, single town school district, but it is working.
Well, that is the, the big thing, that when you try to share with other towns, whatever you try to share with other towns, then the whole situation we find ourselves in now, where we don't really worry that much, the fact that, you know, our facilities person is spending most of his time over at the school, because the essential thing that makes it easier for Newmarket is, it is always the same taxpayer. You know, you're, you're not having to really worry that much if for this particular year the, the, the school's paying two-thirds, but he's spending 50% of his time with the town or something like that, you know, if that's going on, it's, it's, it's in the end, it's the same taxpayer that's paying for all these things. So the, the constant need to renegotiate financial aspects are less important on that surface, and I think that's a key advantage. So moving on.
Do you want to do the budget first, or flip that order?
Sure.
So, it's budget season, as the council knows, as I mentioned last night. We're starting our budget shortly. I have to present, pursue the town charter, my budget to the town council by October 15th. At the same time, the CIP has to be presented to the budget committee and the council as well. I'm not seeing many additional operational costs this year. However, as I informed the council last night, the environmental services director and I are looking at upgrades to our water cap of infrastructure. Right now, interest rates, as everybody knows, are at historical low. Also, there is a settlement amount of about $270 million that the state has from the Mobile Exxon MTBE lawsuit that they are distributing funds for. We met with Rural Development yesterday, and they brought to our attention that it's more attractive to get money from that fund as well as other funds to offset the capital program if we do it as a larger project than it is to come in piecemeal. So we informed the council last night that it, our intention to request, and again, this is water rate payers, not the tax rate, so it's a little different, but perception is, it come, you know, on what goes on the ballot, that we're gonna be looking at probably about $12.5 million worth of upgrade for our water, which would include the development of the Tucker well, the replacement of the South Main Street line, upgrade of the blending facility at the, at the McIntosh well that we need to do, as well as other projects. For those who aren't aware, many of our water mains are not 1960s, but 1895. That's the majority of our lines. So that needs to happen, I mean, we need to upgrade those. We need to upgrade the South Main because not only age, but it's gonna get us better flows out to that area and to 152, and the schools as well. Our, while our water system, our wells have been better since the McIntosh well came on board, we still need more supply. So as many people know, we've secured land with the Tucker well, and we're gonna develop that to add even more. Because one of the issues we're having is the, the two wells that we've had for a long time, the Bennett Sewer well, we need to sometimes take that off so they can replenish and, and allowed to do maintenance there. And right now, we just can't because they're blending with the McIntosh well, which we need to be able to treat that as well. We've been informed that we could get probably up to about a million dollars worth right now for some of the projects. However, we also estimated that probably about a million dollars worth of savings in interest if we bond now versus doing this project over the next 20 years. The environmental services director anticipated that all of our entire water capital needs is about $20 million. So we're trying to do half. Another portion of that, which would actually be funded, not only, it would be funded through what we call Betterment assessments, is that the Moody Point area is having issues with their water. They're drawing down from their wells, and it's starting to draw from the bay, which is getting saltwater into their system. So they're gonna have to hook up to our system shortly. We're looking at ways to do that, and we're estimating that probably about 1.2 to 1.5 million dollars. That would be paid through, as soon as they hook on, they would have the regular rate, plus we'd be assessing an additional fee to cover their costs until that project's paid back. However, the way the system's set up, we have to bond it all at once. It doesn't mean we're gonna issue all the bonds at once, but it is gonna, but we're gonna get the permission to do so, so we can lock in the rates at where we are now. The other large project that we're, we coming up with is the McAllen Dam. We have to address it, we have to refurbish it, and we will, we'll have that as a bond this coming year. We're looking about, the last, I saw it was about 2 million, 2...
I think a little less.
Little less, but, yeah. That is pure, you know, we have to go to the taxpayers on that one. Future bonding that we may have, New Road, to address the drainage in that area, we were originally gonna try to do that this year, but with the number of projects, we just, we put it off, plus it's not quite ready yet. And we need to address our runoff due to the MS4 permits, and that will help us do so. And other than that, a lot of our projects, we've been rolling in with our new performance energy, thank you, program that we, anything, savings that we can have from improvements, we put it back into the capital item, so. I'm not expecting much else on our side for the budget. And our contract is-
That's a slightly larger increase than what-
Yeah. I mean, but I mean, I think it's something what we, we knew was, we have to address. I mean, we, and this is not a, this is us working together for many years, that we put off projects because we were waiting for the school to, to be solved. And now it's time to start addressing some of our programs. And the school did the same, and when we had to do the wastewater plant, we said it probably wouldn't be good for us to both go after the bonds in the same year, and they knew that we were under gun, we had to do it that year, so.
So on the school side, obviously there are going to be major additional facility expenses in the short term. There'll be ongoing maintenance and capital costs, but, but not anything excessive. Our, our greatest addition for the upcoming year will be the teacher contract, there'll be a warrant article for that. And again, that's just another ballot initiative, and so we'll, we'll see how that proceeds. We haven't yet begun negotiations, because we'll be starting later this month, but we anticipate that as the transition to our ballot. Understood.
On our side though, you, you, we, we haven't, we've seen the facilities plan, but there's, there is a, we haven't seen what the impact of that is.
And that, that will be part of the CIP process when, since we have the plan, what we need to have fixed, now that will be part of the, the CIP committee will look at when the facilities director proposes items, and then they'll prioritize it with that. So I, I don't see us issuing any debt for our facilities at this point. I mean, we don't have, if we can do a lot of our HVAC stuff for this building and other buildings through the, the energy savings, then we wouldn't have to.
But it's a little bit like what the school was before you did a big ad run for your whole, you know, you're bringing your whole facilities or coming up to kind of current standards. Town's been on the same side, you know, have our heating and system for this building and other buildings. You know, people have been carefully and, you know, conscientiously keeping machinery going beyond normal life, expected life.
As you know, on the school side, that's not sustainable.
Right.
We're, we're there.
I think one of the things I see so much in the potential of the board is, you know, they're asking a lot, is this whole unfunded liability in the tax program, and it's about $5 billion dollars, or the $11 billion dollar in here, but it's huge. And I remember talking about the town council 10 years ago, and the answer was, then, well, there's nothing we can do about it, because it's not in our control, which is, which is true. But I think, if you're correctly, I think the school side is about a $10 million deficit on, what is it, unfunded liability on our balance sheet. They take the unfunded liability to state, and they allocate it out to, we never see it except in the audit reports. And this year, it came up to $10 million, and I go, whoa. So is there anything the boards can do about it? I guess probably not, but if, as a taxpayer on a fixed income, that problem's gotta be solved on our backs at some point in time. But I don't even know what we should be talking about. I, I was one of those-
So the legislature, I think, has a study committee to look at New Hampshire retirement system again.
Yeah.
And that's kind of an ongoing piece, so I think what the boards could do, if that's a concern, is to contact their local legislators and seek updates and encourage them to find some additional solutions to that. That $10 million figure for us, you know, represents, if the state were to close its doors tomorrow, that Newmarket had to pick up the cost of the retirement plans for all of its current and former employees, you know, who retired while they were working here in Newmarket, that's, that's how much it would cost us. Do I think that's likely to happen anytime soon? No, but at the same time, it, it represents what that gap looks like across the state. We've seen increases in retirement rates for teachers and employees over the years, and I would expect that we're gonna continue to see those, you know, in the coming years. They usually, they're set two years at a time, so there'll be probably another adjustment coming, and that certainly adds when 80% of your budget is staffing, that certainly impacts our, our budget numbers moving forward.
Trying to think of the sequence, but I know, I think we, since I've been on the council, we've had three, every, I'm sorry, every two years, right?
Every two years, yeah.
On like 15 to 17, I'm, I'm sorry, 13 to 15, 15s, and they're huge budget impacts, they're huge. So I don't know whether we should be thinking about, you know, a lot of openness to the taxpayer, putting that in our forecast. I don't know, it's, I would really wrestle whether, I know it's, I know it's there, but I don't know what to do, why. I think we're just, here's some party, like, talk to the reps and say, hey, if you think you're all sort of, sort of down the throats, which they probably will, you should be thinking about tomorrow or else.
And to let everybody know that, I wish it was 15 per, per our employees. For the town, for police, it's 29.43% of every salary we contribute to the retirement, and for fire, it's 31.89. The reason is, they don't-
For regular employees, though?
Uh, 11.3. The reason is because police and fire do not receive social security. So they, they get a higher retirement contribution.
We heard 11 and I think 17.
17 point, yeah. 3.6.
3.6.
Yeah.
6.5, 2.65 social security.
What's the 11 and 17?
Employees and teachers for the school side.
Yeah.
And then medical?
The medical?
Who knows on top of that?
Right.
It's just this theory kind of.
Hey, the good thing is, knock on fake wood, we haven't seen the jumps in the healthcare costs as we saw about seven years ago. I mean, that, there's a point in time where we're seeing increases in healthcare, like 20% in a year, and we're just not seeing that. I think it's, on our side, Health Trust has been managing the funds and being able to keep a good return on the investment. And there was one year that it was just the perfect storm of West Nile, of the markets crashing, of everything happening, that's when we saw it. But healthcare, we've been seeing a pretty level rates at this point.
Is the town allowed this program?
We do. No, it's part of Health Trust, people are allowed to, you know, they sign up, they have, you know, they get, if you work out so much, you get X amount of dollars, you get a check, and then you do certain biometric screenings and you get money. Yeah, actually, you get money, we have a program that if you shop around for your service, that you get reimbursed. So, you know, if you need x-rays, you don't have to go to the one that your, your doctor recommends, you can go to someone else if it's cheaper, and they'll give you a list of what the costs are. And we also encourage people to use urgent care versus emergency room care as much as possible.
So was it, well, we're going now to the scheduled for meetings?
Yep.
And I think, I, because I don't think it's in the, in there anywhere else, I think it's, one thing I wanted to mention that's been, I think, something that Kim and I have been doing, and I think it's been important for that, is that I think when you have the shared services agreement, I think it's vital that two administrators work closely together, and that's what we've talked a lot about tonight, is that they do work closely together. I think in the case of the two boards, you know, you sort of want to understand that when you, when you elect chairman for either board in the future, it's sort of a, a dynamic that I think has become increasingly important, is that the two board chairmen should be communicating regularly to a much greater extent than they, they were in the past. I think it's, it's just, there, this meeting is one of those examples, but on an ongoing basis through the year, Kim and I try to meet with the two administrators, you know, three or four times a year to just sort of review of where things are going, what's working well, and try to pick up, I mean, I think we, we function, any, the chairs, I think when it's working well, will function in that role and be available to sort of, anybody has a concern, anybody is, has, you know, any level of concern or issues without how, how the program is working, how shared services are working, you know, it is this level of complexity because if you're the school board, the facilities person that may be vital to what you're doing with your facilities is officially reporting up through town administrator. And you have your school superintendent to go to on that if you have concerns. But I think there's, there's going to be a role as well for having the board chairman to be aware of what, what is happening in the overall shared services milieu. So I think, I think that's, that's when I talked about vigilance for making sure the boards sort of are realizing that it is, if it were easily done to do these kind of shared, shared services agreements, then I think you'd be seeing a lot of towns jump onto it. But we're proud of it, it's we're fortunate, I think Newmarket's the right size to do this, but I do think we've, we've had a very cooperative situation between the school board and town council for the last couple of years. And I think it's important for this to work, that that, that level of cooperativeness continues. So in terms of ongoing scheduled for meetings, what I've heard from the people I've talked to, which I don't think we've had a formal vote at our level, but I have heard people say that they prefer that the joint town school board meeting would be in about an April timeframe. I don't know if, if that's, that was, that's the, that's the date that I've heard when I've asked about.
One of the reasons for that was when new members come on either boards, they can meet everyone sooner than later, sort of understand how this relationship works, you know, fairly soon after they've consumed their rules. So I think we thought that would be beneficial potentially.
So I, I, what we're, what part of the latest revision to the town charter that the town lives under is that we're sort of mandated to have joint meetings with our, with our commitment, planning board joint meeting. And I think having, from my experience from the last five years, is that the joint meetings are somewhat, you know, it, it takes longer from the time you start to think about it for the time to actually schedule and figure out what the agenda would be and stuff like that. So I think there is a certain agenda. I know on the planning board, for an example, I, I think that can be a fairly significant meeting for us to hold jointly of the year. We're gonna, we're trying to go with just say, it's going to be this time every year. Again, by the- Again, by the time you kind of agree that it's time to hold one, it just tends to stretch out. So if we say we're going to do it in April, I think we can sort of, you know, when we get into it, we'll say, well, this is a matter we want to discuss when we have our joint meeting, this is something we'll put on the agenda, we know we're going to have this kind of review every time when we get together. So it just becomes sort of a simpler in that sense. So I don't know if we need a formal vote on that, we can do a vote within the, saying, Mike, please?
Let me just add on to that. I think, yeah, do you think the scheduling of meetings is key? And the board's working on that too. We sort of sketched our plan and we did it at the last meeting, whether we're generally going to cover over the next year or probably to cover on specific meetings. In terms of the capital improvement work process, you know, I see that happening every year, and it seems like that group does a good job. And I think it's going to be ever so more important now that we've, we've all stretched capacity with the school bond and with the stuff that Steve talked about as well. It might be a good occasion to meet more, when the CIP folks have done their work and maybe give a little work for that, I'm not sure when they wrap up their, their process every year, to discuss those things collectively, because again, you're just one taxpayer. And those things come out of one market, you know, of tax, tax base. So maybe it's just an agenda item, maybe not an occasion for a meeting in and of itself, but that seems to be an important thing. I don't know if we collectively discuss that.
We could, we could certainly have that as an agenda item and in fact could invite the CIP committee to come to our joint meeting.
The CIP wraps up in October. So I think what we, the discussion could be in April is, okay, from the plan that they approved, this is what we're going to see this coming year. This is potentially the budget. So we both know what's going on. I, I mean, basically, it's almost sort of this discussion I just had, what we're going to be bringing up this year, but we could sit around in the room in April and bring it and review it. That may change because of the process the CIP committee has in the summertime to, it may change a little bit of what they recommend, but, I mean, we could highlight it easily at that meeting in, in April.
And some of that can be a review from where we've been in the previous fiscal years. We'll be, you know, April will be wrapping up the fiscal year that we're in, so that might not be a bad place to then start to plan and be able to plan receipts for the CIP committee moving forward.
Yeah, and for somebody that was, you know, as the town representative to the CIP last time around, or alternate, I guess, at that time, but I think one of the things I'd just say that was a good example of the cooperative relationship between the school and town of last year, I think it was your offer that actually, Meredith, but you, you made it. So it used to be that the calendar for the, it still is, the official required calendar for school and town was slightly different, but we operate with some of the same deadlines, just some of the same meeting times, makes it more efficient for the CIP committee to operate. I think that, you know, I think that those kind of things are, you know, perhaps seem like small investments, but everything can help the committees and the town operate in a smoother way.
I think part of the discussion about the budget studio and health office, I guess, my question is, I've always been a fan of a five-year forecast, and I think that's in the charter as well.
We do.
And it would be wonderful if, if the administrators could present to the town that five-year forecast in terms of big items, so that the community could get their head into what we, what we just talked about a few years. I don't think they've ever had that perspective. It's always been separate needs. And I think that's so important for the administrators to say, you can expect over the next five years or four years, increasing your tax rates based upon the power and projects that we have in sight. And we've made the decision that we're going to do project A before project B, so that this is a big tax hike. I think that would be very welcoming. And I don't know whether it's the, the, two boards, they should have that discussion over the two administrators and the two chair can pull that data together. I'm always, I'm always worried about getting caught in the minutia, and it's not minutia, but talking discussions. And I don't know whether the, what organization, if we agree that it's important to have this presentation to the community, how should it be developed? Should it be developed by boards, the administrators, the chairs? And I have no, what answers is-
I think the big part of that would be, which we've discussed on the council side as a presentation, a form of formal presentation of the capital improvement plan. Because that's really going to forecast what the big projects are going to be in the next number of years.
Yep.
Even more say, we're going to have some operational costs that'll change, but those are the big, the big areas and say, hey, look, you know, in year 2020, we're going to be issuing these capital projects, this is how they're going to be funded, but this is also the potential impact to the rate payers and the taxpayers. And then year two, would show the same thing, but it also could show, yeah, the, the rate may be going up, but we're also going to be losing some debt, you know, but we're going to be paying off here. So I think that's, that's the best bet is, for the large projects, would be the capital program.
But that was just, but that was just, what you just said was great. I mean, does the community really understand the sequence of debt that we're getting? Do they, do they know our bond, total bond we're on? Do they know how, what to what limit we are now?
Right.
And how things sequence? And I think the answer is no. Do they need to? I, I don't know. It's just-
Yeah.
The joy of having you guys work together gives you the opportunity to think about a combined presentation about our community's finances, not the school's finances and town, but our community's.
And I think, yeah, I mean, perfect example is that, for the water situation, the nervousness of, okay, we're going to be close to our bonding limit. Well, no, because that's a separate fund. Water and sewer don't go against the general obligation bonds, so we're fine there. But also to show what other financing services we could have. So I think it's, it's really part of the CIP process, but I see what you're saying too. And I don't think most people understand, I mean, it's difficult for us to even explain that, I mean, as you know, when we had the wastewater plant, that I had to beat the drum that this is not on the tax dollars, it's on the rate payers, and so we make sure this is not the same thing.
And my last comment is, I'm honest with you, but, you know, should the boards be meeting together to talk about that overlay of when things, and honestly, I have no suggestion of it or not, but trying to provide some kind of strategic look at our community. I think it's so important to people. That's, well, the school did this, the town, no, 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 the community is doing this, and we've scheduled together, we do a plan, and it's, I think that would be helpful.
I think there's going, always going to be kind of attention because the, the school board, I, I always stand in awe of the amount of work, through work, the school board has to do. You guys work tremendously hard. And I, I think, you know, the, and the council, we feel like we work harder now. I don't think we work as hard as you guys, but I think we work harder now. I think it's important that we not, you know, we stay efficient. If we were, if we're looking at everything you're doing and you're looking a lot of what we're doing, then, then that's, that's too much meeting time.
Right.
So you, you've got to have the right amount of coordination. I think, I think once a year to get together and look at the things we share. And, and recognizing that, and I think that, you know, I think it's worked well with, with Kim and I, having on an ongoing basis intermediary meetings with the two chairs, I think that, that's not a bad system. We might come up with a better system sometime in the future, but for right now, I think that works fairly well, because you don't want to overload the two and spend too much time.
And I think, Al, sort of what, what happened tonight is sort of getting us closer to where you might want to be in terms of sitting down collectively as both boards to say, these are the things that are coming down the pike, either in the next fiscal year or in the next couple fiscal years. You know, this is what's coming from this side, this is what's coming from that side, so we're communicating those things. So I think we're moving in that direction, it's just a matter of us figuring out the best way to do it, and it might be having more, a different, you know, CIP piece or review of that, as Tony was saying, in this meeting that we have, so as not to add another meeting.
And just to kind of bring it all full circle too, I think that when we look at where we're at with our capital improvement plan, one of the reasons why we're even able to talk about that level of forecasting is because we hired Greg.
Yeah.
Which came from, again, you know, the two boards working together. So I think that that's just important to know, because having all of those facilities needs is overwhelming, but it will help us be able to plan as we move forward. And I'm sure, you know, it will be the same on the school side. What your facility needs will be much different, much- And on the school side, it's been difficult to do a five-year forecast right before now because it was always about when, when are we going to address the facilities issue? So I think we're at a different point now where we can do more of that long-range planning and have fun.
As long as you guys understand our goals, we'll be better than you.
Traditionally, yes. I don't know, have you been to the wastewater plant?
Yeah.
Yeah, wastewater, yeah. But, and I, I want to say this too, that, hopefully, maybe this one, that, this is my, in about two weeks will be my sixth year here. From where we were when I started, from where we were, we are today, is almost a complete one-eighty. And it's because of the boards and the council that the communications has opened up. And to be quite honest, it's the, the trust of the people in the community has been to, for the, the government that they have. And I think it's a lot to go with the people who have been serving on these boards these few years that have been able to say, hey, look, this is what we're doing, this is how we're, you know, been very open and honest with everybody and not trying to sell everything, we just explain the facts. And I think that's how we've gotten where we are, and we're in a good position. So I just wanted to say that as well. I think it's a lot of hard work from the both, the school boards and the town councils in the last few years.
Just to go back from the general to one more detail, I think it's important, one of the things that, that's happened with the town, that we've been talking about CIP, and this may not have been something that was replicated on the school side, but I do think it's worth noting, one, one piece of progress. And again, Greg deserves some credit for this, but there was an awful lot of, of going to the CIP, to the, the capital reserve funds for funding for things that were relatively small, that should have come out of operating budget. And it made, you know, it sort of muddies what, what capital reserve funds are for, muddies, muddies what you should be funding in your operating budget when you're, when you're doing those kinds of things. So I think, I think a lot of this is, will be tightening up. And I'll just mention one other little thing that, that Tony and I are working on, and I, and I've had some conversations with Kim. One of, one of the things that struck me, I'm, you know, this will be, it'll be six years that I've been on the council come, come beginning of next year. And it's, what, what impresses you that it's, you know, your council is, or a school board is constantly getting new members and changing, and everybody, you know, you get new people on that are just trying to figure out how this works. And even, even people that are finishing up their first term will be trying to, kind of figure out, how does this work? I think one of the things we, we're going to try to do is, is create a document that doesn't bind the council in any way, but a document where we sort of make suggestion to future councils and be a living document. And some of the stuff that we're talking about in terms of how we share services, how we work across, will capture in there, what, you know, suggested meeting dates, sort of internal calendar of what we need to, you know, if we haven't started setting our goals for the next year, by X date we're behind. So that we know what we, you know, the next council kind of can open up this document and see it, it's really no more powerful than a suggestion, but it's saying, here's what we think is, is what your calendar should look like, or what worked for us. And so that's, that's a little plot. And the last thing I'd put on here is just kind of a topic, I think is, does anybody have, because they, I think we've had a very, kind of, it sounds like the shared services approach has worked well for Newmarket, and I think we feel good about it. I do think it would be worth at this point, if anybody has anything that they, they think we need to work harder at, or that we're not doing well, it would be, it would be good to hear those things so that we can have them, have them out there. I think, I think, you know, communication, I'm more impressed at the importance of communication at various levels between the two boards now than I was a year and a half ago, that it's important. But I'd be interested in anybody else's comments, just kind of general comments, people that are new as well, what they, you know, what they don't know about that, that they think they ought to know, or whether we should be, that the communication could be better about how shared services are working. I'd be interested in just a few more comments before we adjourn. Well, there.
I do, just one thing, I guess, in regards to the shared services for finance. Maybe, dumb question, but to free Lisa up, let her do things that a higher salaried person is hired to do, would it make sense to bring volunteers into, or volunteers or part-time people to help with the implementation or pass them that up to the IT department?
IT's already involved.
Okay.
It's, it has to be her. It's not a, if, if we did anything, if we took, it's not the implementation of software, she has to be intimately involved in that because she's going to be the one using it the most. The only part-time help would be more in the clerical positions, not her side.
Okay.
But we're, we're fine. The, the team that we have in place, it, there's no, there's no issue, nothing's fallen through the cracks because of this project. Things are, it's just they're focusing on a different item. I mean, the school, we knew this going in, we just re-prioritized item. Still doing the audits, still doing the budgets, still everything is going out, it's just other projects aren't getting done because this is what was scheduled for this year.
What's the, I mean, what's the nature of the work in terms of implementing the software? Is there a quality to the data you already have?
No. That was easy, right? Now it's, it's actually learning it.
So that, that's my next question. Do we have, we think about sufficient redundancy in cases, you know, we don't want one person knowing how to use it.
Oh, no, there's hours of training for lots of employees across the town.
There are. I think the only, to be honest, the, yeah, the only people that haven't had their intimate training yet, myself and the department heads, and I'm getting ready for that.
That's coming up.
Yeah. The staff and clerical staff are already involved and know it. I mean, I've got, the three people in the finance office have all been doing the same level of training, so if somebody's out, nothing falls with the craft.
And there is an onsite person?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yes, in training, yeah.
Yep.
But, yeah, there's a lot of behind the scenes in terms of building out the chart of accounts, specifying how you want your reporting structure and what gets routed to whom, and all of that behind the scenes work that she's had to be intimately involved in, and now it is the, the training. And so she and other people in her office are learning things inside and out. To your point though, we talked about we have budget and negotiations coming up, those are times when a business administrator is usually fairly heavily involved. We're looking at, you know, if, if we need to, can we pull in some part-time help on, on some of those things on the school side, whereas she can't really give up the software implementation, but we could bring in some part-time support for a couple of those projects to do, you know, run some spreadsheets for us and do some behind the scenes numbers thing.
And I'm not trying to-
No, no, I appreciate it.
-add cost to the project, but just trying to think of-
Yeah, and, and we, you know, we, I mean, the good news is, again, I think the other thing that helps this work, which is probably why it doesn't always work sharing across towns, is that we're in the same building, right? We're down the hall or down a flight of stairs, and so there's a lot of opportunity for communication. And so, you know, I know Lisa's town software implementation schedule probably fairly well, but, but, you know, that's helpful to me because I sort of know, okay, she's not going to be available in these windows as I'm sort of thinking long range about, okay, I'm going to need data for this at this point, and we're going to set up meetings for, you know, administrators here, we know when some things are going live on the town side, and so we're working around that schedule, but, but we have, I have put the offer out there, and I know she has talked to Steve about if they need to bring in some part-time support, but we'll do that because we don't want to burn out that employee and, or impact her health in the process.
But, but on our side is, they need-
But on our side is, they need to be in that room. Our staff, they can't have a part-timer in the room for that, because they're the ones who need to learn software.
Okay, for, and sorry to, unless anyone has something. So for, the information needs to be scanned, uploaded, the timely work, is that something that?
It was done by the company.
They did the conversion?
Yeah, the conversion was done a long time ago, so, that's not, and then from now on, it's just, that's what the staff will do. Everybody's staff will be just uploading things.
And that'll be the same for the school side as well?
So we already do some of that, but we use a different software system. They're similar, but they're not the same.
I was thinking of, when you mentioned going paperless, scanning help docs and...
We're not, we're not going to try to rebuild invoices for the last 50 years by scanning them all, we're just going to start now and put those records in.
Thank you. I don't know if anybody has, I think we're about at the end of this joint meeting, is there anybody else that has a comment? Kim, do you have anything to say from this?
No, I'm grateful for the success that we've had. We had a question when Greg was moving into the more foot of the works job, how we were going to work that. It was the first time we sort of had questions to the agreements, and I think, you know, we brought it to Meredith and Steve, and they came up with a workable solution that was approved by our board because we had to enclose expenses there, so it was sort of our first test of the way the system was going to work, and I think that it worked very successfully. You know, I appreciate these meetings because, you know, your stuff happens on Wednesdays, our stuff happens on Thursdays, and we may never cross, and so I think it's appropriate for us to sit down at these meetings and look face to face, and maybe talk to someone we haven't met before, you know, as we all serve the town in the unique ways that we do on our individual boards. So I'm grateful for everyone's time this evening, and for us continuing to work with Tony.
I do have a quick question, since we're all here, and maybe this is a loaded question, and I don't want to put up a can of, huge can of worms, but how's the project going?
Great. Can't wait for schools to open.
The building?
Yeah. We talked about it.
We knew summer was going to be super busy and that there was a lot going on, but it's exciting, the website was just updated today, but you can see pictures of the steel going up at the elementary school, so that's a great step forward, that means the foundation, and Masonry is in, and they're putting up the steel there. There's still a lot to happen all through this winter, and that will all be on the periphery of both buildings, where they've worked just in the additions, but we are, you know, ready and looking forward to open, our staff come back next week, so there's some last-minute cleaning crews and striping of parking lots and paving, finishing touches happening this weekend, and then we'll be ready for staff next week.
I drive by, I have a grand road all the time, and the front, from what I see when I drive by, it looks, it looks great, so.
They were diverting traffic as I came down.
Yes, they were.
They were working light.
High level, what they're doing, just to refresh, is the existing part of the high school, they did some, a lot of work in this year, they're going to be moved entirely, there won't be any construction folks at all in the building while students are in there. They're going to move their attention to the additions, they'll work on those over the winter. You'll see steel going up on those as it comes in in the fall. And then, in theory, when those are done by this time, hopefully next year, some of the class functions will move out to those in the junior senior high school, and then they'll start focusing in on the renovation of the existing building. Lots of little things going on going down that, at the elementary school, the construction will wrap up next year. So we had to, the original thought was maybe we could do it in one year, but to keep the programs going, the summer programs going, we had to amend it a little bit, so that's scheduled. No major pickup so far, but as I've told people, like the analogy is, we're just leaving the harbor, going to the ocean, so there will be challenges, we have a, it's an old building, and I'll just remind people that, we said it before our lawn vote, it's an old building, and you find things in old buildings, but we're on budget as we stand. There's been a few change orders, but those are within budget, and not entirely surprising in a project like this, some soils that we needed to supplement, because you can't test every square inch of a property, but so far, so good, I would say.
It's great. It's exciting.
Well, I think we can be adjourned if everybody would like to be. Okay.
Thank you very much.